So what I would like to do is I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting for the Board of Ed on September 20th, 2021 to order. So there, there we go. And the first, the first motion is the approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 13th. Can I have a motion to accept, a motion and can I have a motion to accept? That would be, thank you. First came from Liz, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the acceptance of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 13th, 2021 signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain. The motion has carried, all right. So the first, or hi Susan, it's good to see you. Um, the first order is on agenda number three is the update on the school opening, transportation and new schools. And so Phil and Susan.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I would say things are getting better day by day, but it's with a lot of work and collaboration with the bus company, with our opening. I, I have to say, as I said in the board notes, this school year brought together the culmination of the Groton 2020, which was a heavy lift and it was the desire of this community to have equity for all our schools and to build middle school on the top of Fort Hill that could become a campus with the Fitch High School, and we're going to talk about that this evening. And also to magnetize all five of our elementary schools and building two that replaced four actually. And I think even before my time, there were 10 elementaries and now there are five. And while the neighborhoods might have grown for those, you know, who were enrolled originally in each of the schools, parents also got to participate in a lottery, which allowed students to be able to pick and choose themes and to go to different schools. So that all happened this year. And it was a huge endeavor and Tom Lonsdale reminded me that on the first few days because it was a heavy lift and I know that our families, you know, have worked with us and given us some feedback and I appreciate that. And I'm always checking in to see when every last child gets home. So it has been a challenge, I would say. We are faced like the, the state and the nation with a bus driver shortage and no fault of our bus drivers, they're awesome. They're coming every day and driving our kids and we're so appreciative of that. The company that we hire STA employees are bus drivers and you know, they really handle some of the management of everything that's going on. When we went to a two-tiered bus system, it's actually a good thing that we did that because I can't imagine us handling three tiers and fewer bus drivers. So we are still working out some of the kinks. This morning or last week, we announced that we were going to kind of have the kids ready 10 minutes earlier. And today we saw the positive effects of that. Although I think there's still some communications to be had around that. But our students were here on time for the bell. There were, you know, there was some concerns that they weren't here for breakfast and they weren't here for their homeroom period. So we're hoping that that will be resolved by the latest, you know, route structures. So with a few minutes earlier in the morning, you know, we got everybody here and also it was helpful to the elementaries. The afternoon, when we don't have enough bus drivers, some are what they call doubling up, so they have to take on additional routes. And that's never easy with the two-tiered bus system. What we have routed here in Groton Public Schools is to have 66% capacity, which is two to a seat, maybe for some of the very youngest children, three to a seat. But I still think that will happen. I think we have some things to work out. I know that we have some new bus drivers who are in their program now for, you know, instruction and it takes a while because we want to have the, the safest drivers ever. And so it takes some time for training and we're working on that. So I would say all in all, I talked to a few of the principals, I talk to them every day, but they are saying it is getting better. And the kids are happy to be in school, the teachers are happy to be in school. Phil and I have seen that firsthand and we're all glad to be back. And we're glad to have our kids back, full-time, five days in person. So, but we do recognize the challenges we faced and we appreciate the parent feedback. And I've tried to reach out to anyone who has responded to me or to my staff to let them know that we are working on the situation and give them some ideas of ways that we're correcting the situation with the bus company. I don't know if Phil has anything to add to that because he's been my right-hand and left-hand partner and so has Tom Lonsdale.
Yeah, no, just, just echoing what you said, you know, just in letting everybody know that we, we are trying to communicate as best we can because that's the most important thing. We're trying to meet with the key players involved, whether, whether it's talking about transportation, whether it's working with the principals to get paras and building subs in the building or get positions filled. And we just, we meet and discuss it day after day and try to problem solve, you know, and I've been impressed, you know, we, we've just been able to handle everything that's coming our way, you know, we are dealing with some outside entities. So we have to adapt to what they're doing as well. But you know, the key is the kids and right now I think the kids are, you know, they are adapting, you know, we, we just keep, we want to assure people that their, their safety and getting them in the classrooms is the most important thing. So we're going to keep, uh, we're going to keep, you know, we're going to keep having the discussions and keep problem solving until we have everybody where they want to be, when they want to be there.
My networking with superintendents across the state and Fran Rubenowitz, who's in charge of CAPS, which is Connecticut Association of Superintendents in Connecticut, has really, they've been working with the governor. You've heard other states have called in, you know, extra support systems. And so we certainly have filled in surveys and had many discussions about ways to identify the problems and to solve the problem. So while we are not alone, that doesn't necessarily help because we care about each and every one of our students and their families. So I am really looking forward to some smooth sailing.
Jay, I saw you raise your hand and then Liz.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that it really is amazing, you know, what, what the staff, faculty, administration, everyone's come together to really remake the district and I certainly want to acknowledge that and thank everyone. I know it's very difficult because, you know, we, we have, you know, three brand new schools. Just last year in the middle of COVID, we're combining the two middle schools. So it's, it's an amazing amount of work. But I just, I do feel like I need to mention that I, I keep hearing reports that some of the buses are still not getting to the schools when, when school's beginning. And I don't know how many of those there are. I don't know how widespread that issue is. But you know, I just, I can't let it go unnoticed that we are hearing those reports. And I realize we have a shortage and I keep hearing people saying, we just need to go back to the way it was. And what I think people need to understand is we can't go back to the way it was. If we were to go back to the way it was, I don't know, high school students might have to get picked up at 6:00 AM. I'm, I'm no expert, you know, I can't run.
We could not have fit another tier in this situation. We're almost lucky that we went to a two-tiered system.
Right.
Not that I knew about this bus shortage. The first I knew was hearing some news about Florida when they went back, but certainly was not informed that we were having a shortage at the same time. But now that I know, I know that the bus, the bus system STA has a plan for hiring new people and training new people. And I have to say my accolades towards the bus drivers that are showing up every day and taking on additional routes so that they can get all the kids to school and from school. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and I do, I do want to acknowledge that I keep hearing, you know, periodic reports that, that people are upset with bus drivers or our transportation office or STA. And I just want to say, you know, they are doing the very best with a very challenging environment. I for one approved the plans that have led to this situation. I was on the board, we approved an all magnet school. We knew there'd be challenges. If you want to blame anybody, blame me. Don't blame the drivers, the transportation office. These folks are all doing the best that they can and we continue to work with them to, to make it better. But we, we can't go back. Once we had these new schools, you know, the, like I said, the high school pickups would have to be even earlier than they are now. And so we can't go back to that. But I know everybody's working very hard to, to take care of it. The other thing, I, one other clarification is I know that we, we published some new pickup times this morning, but I'm hearing that there's still some confusion about, you know, which schedule is being used. And I don't know whether it just wasn't fully implemented today and whether it'll be implemented later in the week. But there's still some confusion about the exact times.
I have to say we've been in, you know, direct communication with STA and their management, giving them all the information that they need to then deliver to their employees, our bus drivers. And so we've asked for them to make sure that it's clear as to what the expectation is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if any, I'm sorry, one more thing. If anybody wants to, if anybody is upset with anybody, you can write or call me. My information's on the Board of Ed contact page.
Thank you, Jay. I'm going to recognize Liz and then Rita.
Um, Susan, I just had a couple of questions for you about, I know at the beginning of this, the beginning of the school year, we were facing some overcrowding on buses. You know, where there was pictures that kids were actually taking on the buses of kids on the seating on the floor. Have, has this situation ironed itself out? Is, are there, do we still have overcrowding or are we, is that something that has been rectified?
So I have to say to you, Liz, that the Groton Public Schools had created routes that didn't have more than 66% capacity, which was two to a seat for the older kids.
Right.
Um, I've heard those stories too. I have not seen any pictures. I've had the administrators looking out to see, you know, who's sitting in the seat when they leave the school and who's sitting in the seat when they return. And all my administrators have said that every child has a seat. However, there are some that are three to a seat. And I don't think that's going to last for long. I think that's a temporary thing until we have more bus drivers hired. What has happened is our good faithful bus drivers who are driving every day are picking up the load for the five that, you know, decided to retire early. And maybe the five who, you know, are absent in a day and we don't have substitutes. So therefore we have to make sure all of our students are picked up. So there could be three to a seat in some cases, but not daily. And we're looking for the time when we're actually able to follow the exact route that we have established because they're efficient, they're effective and they're two to a seat. So it's just a matter, please spread the word. If you want a job where you're with kids and, you know, I don't say it's the easiest job in the world, but I say that I love being with kids. So it's a, a job where you're able to keep kids safe, get them to and from school. And we're looking for people who might be interested.
And another thing, I had just another thing. I was wondering, as we've been into school now, almost two weeks, starting our, the beginning of our third, have we seen any issue with COVID?
We have seen a couple small cases because the, the guidelines are a little different this year where if you've been vaccinated and you're in contact, you don't have to, you know, quarantine. There are guidelines on our website and I'm getting ready to send out a message to all families that we will keep that website active and we will continue to put up the latest information. So families, instead of me sending out a, you know, robocall every time we hear of one, we will update that website automatically and we'll show our families where to go to get the best information in the most timely way for both staff and families.
And on the same venue with the COVID, I've had some parents contact me about cafeteria seating in the middle school and the high school. Can you speak to that a little bit of how that's being addressed? Are, are kids expected to self, you know, identify that they are, you know, they have, they're not vaccinated? I mean,
No.
I, I would like to be able to speak to that if I, you know, if somebody asked me that.
No, but we do have the seating situated so we feel like it's safe enough with proximity or with, you know, barriers, either, is either physical barriers or space barriers so that they can eat and have a lunch safely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Rita.
Um, Susan, um, I had a couple of questions. The first, since Liz brought up COVID, the goal standard is vaccine masking testing. Are we doing testing and, or do we give information about where students or staff could get tested?
So I would say that we have a Tuesday talk tomorrow and I met with the superintendents tonight. And we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we're encouraging all staff to get vaccinated and all eligible students. But people have the right to opt out. And if they do opt out, then they need to be tested weekly. So Ledge Light Health has given us a wonderful spreadsheet that we've sent out and I think I sent it in the board notes of very local places for free testing. Every day of the week, all time. So it can be before school, after school, on the weekend. So once a week, if, if people have opted out, then they need to be tested so that we know that our community is safe.
I, I believe that you left off, um, Groton City has a Tuesday afternoon, three to seven.
Oh, I did leave that off. I will absolutely add that. Thank you, Rita.
And Fridays, um, after, late afternoon, three to seven is also in New London. So there's, there's more availability and on Route 184, you could get testing and vaccine.
And at my local CBS, it's still free of charge.
Yes.
So for both the vaccine and the testing. And we are in Groton having another Fitch High School vaccination clinic on the 4th of October and then again on the 1st of November. I'm hearing really good news about the safety of the Pfizer vaccine for our younger children. And so as soon as that is authorized, we will figure out a way to make that even more accessible for those families who wish to do it.
Right.
Because it does take a parent authorizing and giving us permission before any vaccination would occur.
Right. I think younger children have to be with a parent or a guardian.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Definitely. Um, my other question was with the bus drivers, the buses that are not used, that are sitting there because there is no drivers. I know we contract for so many buses for each of our contracts. Do we, are we paying for those buses that are sitting and not taking our children to school as part of?
We are not, but I would prefer to have the bus drivers to drive the buses. Oh, yeah. We have that in our budget to take our kids safely back and forth to school and do it the way we had planned to have it done.
But I know this is a contract and I just wanted to make sure that we're not being charged for buses that aren't, you know, going around.
No, as a matter of fact, I really met with the STA management system at least once a week. And we sat around the table and we've discussed ways to make it better. I'm there to support, but I'm also there to say as superintendent of schools, I want this to work and I want it to work now. My families are frustrated, you know, our staff is frustrated. This has got to work. What are your ideas?
Right. And I believe.
You're under contract, yes.
Under contract, and I believe they're in contract negotiations also with their bus drivers. So I hope that they really think about giving some raises out, especially bonuses to some of these people that are, like you said, doing double duty and.
I'm hearing good things about that, but I'm waiting to hear a final answer on that too. I agree. We want to take care of our good bus drivers who are showing up every day.
Yes. And, and I guess you're going to go into new schools next, so.
I am.
And listen.
Thank you, Rita. Dean.
Thank you. As people know, I have a daughter, one child left in the system. She's in high school. And I heard the phrase, uh, children adapt, our children adapt. They do, but we can't have that slide into another territory. And that is when we say that children adapt, what we really mean sometimes is that they're putting up with stuff. And that's what my daughter's doing. I'm offering no solutions. I have no idea what the problem is. I see what the surface is, which is what other parents see. And that's this, that overall, uh, even when it works, my daughter is coming home an hour later than she did last year. Okay, that's her experience. She's home an hour later. So just that alone for her is a negative. But what kind of a ruckus can she raise about that? She's just one student. So she's coming home an hour later, the beginning of her day is the same. The 15 minutes, which I know wasn't a primary driver, the 15 minutes, um, you know, late start time, doesn't make any difference. Uh, she has been brought to school late a number of times. She does not like that, even when it's forgiven. And there's a process for getting yourself off the tardy list. Uh, but even when that's forgiven, she personally does not like showing up late for class. There was one day last week where the bus didn't even show up. Or at least it looked like it didn't show up. She got a ride to school. When she gets there, she sees other people she knows riding on the bus, getting off of other buses. So again, recognizing the work that people are doing to scramble, recognizing that this is a, a new system that we're trying, recognizing the shortage of bus drivers. Just want to let you know, give you an idea of the immediacy of the problem away from our talk. Uh, I'm watching it through my daughter's eyes and I'm hearing the other people are having the same experience. So that there's just, it better iron itself out somehow. I don't know how, I'm not a transportation guy, but it better iron itself out because what's going to happen is that parents who can drive their kids to school will at some point draw their own red line, wash their hands of the system and begin to ferry their kids back and forth from school. And then we're going to move into another model. Now we're going to have more parents and they're going to be loath to bring their kids, put their kids back on the bus. That will now have a new normal because they can do that. And, and so what we were expecting is ridership versus, you know, parents dropping off.
Right.
It's going to change. Uh, and, and we're going to have, we're going to have clogged elementary schools, clogged middle school, clogged high school.
I get it. I, I feel your pain and I feel the same way. I feel that sense of urgency, like we have to correct the situation. But I know there's a lot of ingredients to that. And the most important thing is to really encourage people to sign up for being a bus driver because it's a really important job. You know, it's where our kids start their day and end their day and it means a lot to our kids. So if I have anything to say, they are very important. I've known that as a teacher, as a principal, as a mom, as a grandma. And I, you know, and even though there's information around the state that others are dealing with the same thing, it doesn't help me to resolve the issue. I want to make it better for my students in Groton. So I hear you. You're right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what else, I don't know what else to say about this. It's just, uh, and I don't know whether it's just the shortage, but we're trying out a new system. As Jay pointed out, we probably can't go back to the old system because we, we now have people being ferried back and forth across towns.
The new system doesn't have anything to do with this. This is really directly with the bus shortage.
I understand. But my understanding is that we couldn't go back to the three-tiered system because of the way we now have to ferry people across town for the, at the elementary level because of the magnets.
Right. Well, there's just no, if you don't have the drivers, it's very hard to squeeze in a third tier when we're having a hard enough time with two tiers.
Yeah, so my daughter spends 20, 30 minutes sitting in the middle school, waiting for the middle schoolers to load. So that's, that's one thing she does not appreciate.
Well, we're working on that too. I have to tell you, we're working with administration at the middle school because we know there is a clog in there and we need to make it work faster. But we also have to make sure they're safe, all in all, so.
Dean, I, I needed to say thank you for keeping it real, right? Because you're giving us a real life experience about what, what our students are facing. And, and Susan, I do appreciate the fact that you show hope that this is going to be worked on and that it also, um, there's a complexity to this and it's not because we went to a tiered system and, and it's not just, and it's not just. And so I hold that as a reality, but I also hold that our community has been somewhat tolerant. But my guess is the toleration is probably lessening. Um, and, um, and I, and I guess, um, I, I'm not, I, I don't, I see on the community Facebook page that there's quite a lot of chatter around that and with a lot of misinformation. So, um, I, and I also hope that, you know, as you do changes like the time of the pickup and stuff, that at least the board gets notified that there's a, that there's a difference just so that when we get phone called, we have a sense of, we can have a sense that we're holding that. But once again, I do appreciate that you know, you know, the seriousness of this and that you know the, the frustration level of, of this. And I, um, and also that it's, it's, you must be exhausted around this. And thank you very much for working as hard as, as you have on that.
Well, the health and safety of our kids is number one because we need to do, we need to keep that in mind because that, with that comes really good learning. So all those good things that are happening right now in the schools with the teachers and the students as Phil and I have gone around town and seen firsthand, you know, really have come from so much work that has happened in this district over the past eight to 10 years. And I think the kids are happy to be back. You know, we see really smiling faces behind masks and we see teachers so happy to be with them, you know, full-time, in person and really trying to use technology in the best way possible, but also being able to get back to some of those inquiry-based instruction, science, discoveries and reading and writing. And, um, you know, when you walk around the schools, that's what you see. So I look forward to the day that I can have board members do some of these walkthroughs with Phil and I. We have a schedule and we'll be in those schools every week. So, um, just to see firsthand, I know Phil did his first curriculum instruction council and it went so well and we had some new members and we have some members who've been with us. And so they're very excited about the work this year.
Can you, is, if there's no other further questions about the transportation or comments or concerns, can you move into the new schools?
I sure can.
Thank you.
So with the new schools, as you know, um, the buildings are, you know, kind of delivered to us and teachers are in there, kids are in there. You know, they're beautiful buildings. And if you see anything on Facebook from the building committee, you'll see how, just how beautiful, not only the playgrounds, but the actual physical buildings, the, the gymnasiums of the two new elementary schools are the size of a middle school gymnasium. So not only will they be utilized but by our children throughout the day in their PE class, but they'll be utilized by our community. So Parks and Rec and all of our community partners will be able to, to use them and sign up, you know, for building use forms. So we're looking forward to that as kind of our next step moving forward. Our kids are already doing some field trips. I think you saw some pictures from our themes, River Magnet, where they are the marine science, environmental science school. And, you know, Project O is one of their partners, Ness is another partner. And you saw some wonderful pictures of kids who may have never, you know, had an experience on the water, who were able to actually take a field trip. So we're looking at field trips too. You know, not only your apple orchard and your wonderful farm to school field trips, but then looking at our partnerships, whether it's in the arts or through. looking at our partnerships, whether it's in the arts or through STEM, whether it's through the Nautilus Museum, which is really free of charge and doing, you know, a STEM experience, so looking at those enrichment opportunities during the school day and after the school day, those things will all be happening. And I certainly know, and our our two principals here from the middle school and the high school will share with you the the kind of shared experiences that kids will be getting during the day and after school through intramurals and sports and clubs. So there's a lot happening, a lot of wonderful things happening. And um, you know, we look forward to this year where we're really with our students and um you know, one of the things I also wanted to talk to you about is that the state assessment data is here, so we will use that to help inform instruction. We'll use that to help fill any gaps that kids might have had last year. And we'll also use their focus assessments and their interim assessments throughout the year so that we can continue monitoring progress. It was a really difficult year with assessment to really um tap in like we've usually done, where we can compare one year to the next, one cohort to the next. Everything was changed on us. There were so many variables. So it's hard to measure student to student, class to class, district to district. And um, we've really been working closely with the um Connecticut State Department of Education and the Performance Office. And we have some student data that we're looking forward to sending home to families with a letter from me explaining that we will use this data to help our kids grow. And from this point forward, and really using data that we had prior to COVID to keep watching them and accelerating them forward. Uh but mostly filling the gaps of any gaps that we see, but moving kids forward, so. Um, that information will be forthcoming um early October. And I look forward to coming back with Phil and Tom to actually give you some data to help you to see what the state has found is that in-person learning really does matter. And I think we could have all estimated that and said that, any of us around the table who've taught or who have had children or who recognize that. It really does matter, and it was definitely more successful than for total remote learners. However, there were some total remote learners who also were successful, so I don't want to say blanket statement all of one and and not the other. So we are looking forward to using um any kind of technology that really seemed to work, but also to have less screen time and have more hands-on experiences and to really find those things that work for kids.
I want to make sure that, are there questions that board members have about the new schools specifically?
A question. Um, I was, um, a couple of teachers mentioned that at Mystic River, there is no shade at all in the playground. Gets very warm, and I don't know if it's the same at Thames River. But you know how they, I know in Washington DC, they have these like shade umbrellas that they put over play equipment. I think that has been a concern on the hot days, that that wasn't built in to the.
Right. There aren't trees around. You're right.
No, it doesn't have to be trees, but we actually have these like like almost like not an umbrella, but they go around playground and provide shade. So that is something I think we need to really think about in the future because they're just ba- they're just baking out there. And there's no place to go for shade.
Good idea. I will bring that to the attention to the building committee because they're still really kind of in charge of making sure everything is working right. So now's the time to get that information to them, right?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Liz.
Um, Susan, are the tile floors all fixed? Is the tile fixed?
The tile is all down. There are a few other spaces that need to be corrected during a time when kids are home, like a vacation time. But everything is kind of sealed down in place, but they want to make sure that the whole building project is taken care of, so that will happen over the course of the year.
Okay, well, we.
But nobody's tripping over tiles. They're all kind of down, but we want to make sure they're all the new tiles.
Okay, so will we get information about um what the problem was at a later time?
I hope so.
Okay.
I hope, I mean, they're saying it was a material issue with the one company. But we can always invite Rick Norris back and the building committee to come back and kind of give us updates. I think it's really important for us to continue to get these updates.
Yeah, thank you.
Hmm, absolutely.
If there's no other questions about those things, I would like to move us on to um our um discussion around the Fitch High School and the um Groton Middle School campus. Um, and so, hi Ted, how are you? Welcome back to school. Hi Peter, welcome back to school. Um, and so I, Susan, I don't know how you want to start it. Our first thing was kind of an administrative organization. Um, but before we go right to that, um I do want to recognize that Sam, you have been sort of the the lead point between all the transportation issues and sort of gotten um Groton District. And so I just wanted to say thank you for all of your efforts around that. Thank you. All right.
I thank him every day.
All right, so um the first thing um was the administrative organization. I think that this goes back to cheese and crow a long time ago, that we were kind of um just kind of taking a look at um Groton Middle School, and now that you're in the second year, or actually you're in your first full year, like I'm saying first full year because we're just gonna go full, full um. Peter, in terms of like, how's that going? What is your organization? And also Ted, sort of what does that look like? We moved um one of your um your administrative positions to sort of full-time. We also now have Mark Romano, who I'm glad to see is here as well. Um, but so I think, Susan, I think that that was that was our purpose of having the agenda item. Is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, we spoke about, there's kind of four bulleted items under there where we talk about um, the organization. I see we've kind of skipped over the Assistant Superintendent's report, but we can always go back to that. Um. Oh, maybe, maybe not. Sorry.
Yep, that's not on the agenda tonight.
No, I know, I'm looking too far ahead.
All right. So I don't know, Peter or Ted, if you want to chat first, who it wants to?
Sure. Ted, you wanna go? I'm I'm happy to.
Sure, yeah, I mean, no, I'm I'm happy to. I think that um, you know, as we've, as we tried to get the organization um to a point where we we are really have good coordination between the high school and middle school, we're starting to see uh some of the benefits of that already. I mean, starting with Mr. Romano, uh bringing him back on board, uh you know, certainly you know, just the making sure that we're we're using the the facilities equitably uh between the schools and and making sure that the the students have access to the facilities that are best for their particular uh 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 sports, and that's only gonna also benefit us as we go, as we go further along and start talking about the indoor sports where I think it even becomes more complicated um and uh and some of our activities as well. Uh I think it's just uh, that's that's been big, and I think uh as we, you know, have been talking about the busing issues, um, those have all also been magnified with the uh athletics uh as well. Um, you can imagine that if we're having trouble bussing the kids just from uh from school, that getting an extra bus to send them to an athletic event, and Mark's been really integral in working with that, and I know he's gonna continue working with that with the middle school as well, so uh that's been a big part of as well. Um, you know, the coordination of the counseling offices between the high school uh and the middle school as well uh has allowed us, uh we have middle school students that are taking classes at the high school. Uh, we have coordination between our schedules, even though we're not on the exact same bell schedule. Uh, we have some coordination between the schedules at the middle school and high school to allow for that. Uh, and we're kind of working out the the uh, you know, the uh the 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 issues in that as well, but tho- those students have already started their classes and are participating in classes uh at the high school. Uh, and then, you know, uh Mr. Diskin uh working with the the summer school was working over at the middle school as well. Uh, we've had some professional development where the middle school and high school have shared uh with the NYPD professional development as well, and I certainly would would want Kathy to speak to that. Uh, she could speak more diligently than than I can at this point, but but I think that, you know, we we continue to try to uh see, okay, what are some ways that we can share services? What are ways that we can coordinate with each other? Uh, you know, uh and just uh and just try to 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 use our resources cooperatively. And I think that that has started, uh especially with some of the uh coordination with some of the administrative positions that we have in place, so. Um, the last thing, uh and I think uh Peter could speak to this as well. Uh, the coordinator says, oh, you know, that's one of the the positions that we really started with. And uh they have continued to work with us, uh both for the professional development piece, uh working with curriculum between the departments. It really allows us to make sure that what we're looking at are curriculum six through twelve and not just uh, you know, uh isolated within each each school. Uh, and then, uh, you know, again, working with the 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 departments and the professional development has been been huge, and they they're only uh continuing that work. They started that last year. Um, so uh, you know, but that that curriculum development piece, I think is gonna be uh big as we continue with the NYPD and so on uh moving forward. So uh I've been nothing but encouraged with this. I think that uh, you know, uh Peter and I are are talking to each other pretty much every day at this point and uh and really trying to coordinate with each other. Uh, and it's only been a good thing, and and again, this as, you know, uh, we've been kind of reaching out with the with the uh uh with with the administrative and with the teachers now, too. I think it's it's gonna be, it could just uh uh to become a a strength for our district, so.
I would, I would echo what what Ted said. Uh, we're seeing some really good synergy, uh particularly in that area of professional development and um the the vertical articulation conversations that are happening with with curriculum. Um, we we got our 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 staff together to start the year. Um, looking at our tier-one instruction as well as uh NYPD, and I I think that um that that's a, that's a powerful um move in in terms of making sure that we have something cohesive, truly cohesive happening, six through twelve. Um, with, and and I think, you know, Ted Ted mentioned, um, you know, the athletic director, Mark Romano. The the fact uh that we we have NYPD, we have um some consistency with um how athletics are being handled, uh six through twelve only helps to keep students thinking um about Groton Middle, we're Falcons, Fitch High School are Falcons. We want our students to stay as much as possible, six through twelve on our campus. Not go to other campuses, other towns. We want them on our campus. Um, you know, Kim, you mentioned uh that this being um perhaps the second year, first year. Let me tell you, having students back fully, fantastic, but it's a completely different flavor than the start of last year. Some in some fantastic ways and others like, oh, okay, yeah, we've um, we uh need to continue to engage and and build culture. Um, you know, we are a large middle school, largest middle school of this side of the state. And uh we know that um our mission is to make this large school feel small. Um, and yeah, we've got uh each of the assistant principals is assigned a grade level, and um the priority is building those relationships with students and families. You know, we we know there are a lot of social, emotional challenges that are out there, so it's it's more important now than ever for us to be able to to have families connect with an administrator that they're going to know for the entire uh three years at Groton Middle. And you know, we do the same thing with with our counselors because we know, uh particularly as kids move from fifth grade to sixth grade, it's a huge transition for them. Um, thank goodness, we were able to hold a a series of in-person orientation sessions to start this year. That was huge. It was really big for us. Um, I think family is left with a a much more comfortable feel, having actually been in the building. Um, a- and, you know, fingers crossed, uh we get to do more of that as as we get into this year and and hopefully things improve with regard to to COVID. Um. Yeah, so um it this is, this is a new year, very different from last year, and um it's really thankful for this this synergy that's created across campus. As Ted mentioned, we are in touch every day. And um, you know, some some things are due to challenges, others are, hey, this is, this is pretty cool. Let's let's see what we can, we can do further in this area. Um, we always having a conversation with Mr. Romano today, and and um one of the intramurals that we're looking to start um, uh next week is is tennis, you know, that, and we can really um offer that to a large number of middle school students. That's not something that we've been able to do before. We had a couple of courts that caught there that were run down, and we had a few kids going out, but um, you know, it's things like that. Um, and and actually uh being advised or or coached by one of the high school staff um, um, just allows us that to to be able to to take advantage of of many of the things that being on the same campus presents to us.
Does the board members have um comments specifically about the administration? Um, for Peter, I I I think I'm gonna just take it in bullet points, if that's okay, guys, because I just feel like we're gonna have lots of questions. Um, I see both Rita and Liz have raised their hand. I saw Rita first. I will recognize Rita and then Liz, and then I'll take whoever comes next.
Peter, this is a question for you. What is, what is the glitch of the high school students having to wait on the bus for the middle school students to board, which makes them actually, you know, get home even later? Well, what, well, how is that being worked on? How can we improve it?
Oh, I I I heard loud and clear what uh Mr. Antipas reported with regard to twenty, thirty minutes waiting. Um, I'm hoping you can uh check in with your daughter to see if if she she is experiencing what I'm seeing over the last few days. We've gotten that down to students loading uh within fifteen minutes. Um, and and we hope to get that down to to perhaps twelve. Uh, I believe the buses are rolling and about two fifty, our dismissal time is two thirty-five. Look at the start of the year. Um, at the middle school, it does take longer. We had great challenges with busing to start, and um students being able to find which bus is theirs. Um, and and some of that just naturally works, works itself out, Rita. Uh, but you know, we also had other other curveballs. We we had two days in a row in which we had out of the, out of the blue, we had a bus breakdown. And uh so kids have to get out, and the the kids who are behind that bus are are stalled. Um, and and then um, you know, we had another day in which we we've got three buses which go to one section of town, and we need to make sure that uh that all those students um got onto those buses and and were able to do so safely. And it just happened to be that those three buses were the very first three in line. So some of those challenges um are are not going to be um typical. They do pop up from time to time. But I would say we are in a much better place now. The last, I would say Thursday, Friday, today. Um, we are starting to really hit our stride, and I would anticipate that we're gonna be able to knock that down even further. So, yeah, twenty, thirty minutes uh sending in a bus, that's a nightmare. That's a nightmare for me. It's more of a night, even more of a nightmare for the students and the bus driver and the parents who are waiting at home. Um, but we have seen some vast improvement in that area, Rita.
Yeah, I was just curious if whether or not, you know, the dismissal needed to be five minutes earlier or so that the students are waiting there for when the Fitch High School bus comes by. I I was just trying to.
So what what we see, Rita, is is actually, it's not so much an issue of getting the the buses there. Um. Uh, get getting the students out earlier, it's getting the buses there sooner and altogether. Um, and and unfortunately, due to the fact that we we are short drivers on a daily basis, there are runs that have to double up, and we have to communicate this to students. At the end of the day, this bus is not gonna be here. You need to ride this bus. So getting all the buses there together by the time dismissal happens is a huge component, and it that has improved. So if we have the buses there, all the buses there, when they're supposed to be there, we can load them relatively quickly. And and the same is true for um unloading the kids. If the buses are all there when um they're supposed to be, we can get them off in five or six minutes.
So who who is getting them off the buses and putting, is it the the three vice principals and yourself?
So we have a number of staff out there. Uh, Mr. Koteki, Mr. Daniel Look are on one side of the building with the buses, and we're seeing that with other staff. And Mr. Davis and I are overseeing and actively participating. Uh, I shouldn't even say we're saying, but we're we're just, I I I wouldn't want you to to sit in our our um pick-up or drop-off line because it'll go all the way down the hill, but come visit sometime and you'll see Mr. Davis and I are are out, safety, waving traffic. Safety waving traffic, um.
Well, I just, you need more help. I mean, uh, you know.
So, uh, so, so Rita, do you have any more questions in terms of the administration stuff? I mean, I I.
Yeah, I want to know whether or not. Do they need teachers, more teachers to help? Is it just the fact that just the administrators are doing this? Uh, how do we make it smoother?
So we also have additional security guards and I I'm so grateful to our SROs. Um, we have additional, you know, support, um, through paraprofessionals, tutors and. Um, you know, others too. That are really very helpful. So I think the security guards was a big bonus.
Absolutely. Honestly, it comes down to bus drivers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Liz?
I just had a quick question for Ted and Peter. Um, could you do, could you go over, um, the administrative? Structure at the high school. I saw something on on the webpage this morning this afternoon. That I had forgotten about and I was wondering if you could just. Especially, um, it's Erin McGuire's position. Is she, is she at the high school? Is she at the middle school? Is she in both?
So Erin McGuire is still an assistant principal at the high school.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, she has, um, some responsibilities that. Both covered both the high school and middle school. So she's basically coordinating both the high school and middle school counseling offices.
All right.
Um, and so that we have coordination between our schedules. Uh, to allow for, you know, uh, increasing opportunities for middle and high school, uh, students. Our middle school students to take advantage of high school courses. Um, and to, you know, again, it's it's really about the the scheduling, making sure that students are getting the. Uh, those opportunities and then, you know, eventually hoping that we're working on like, you know, they, the, uh, counseling curriculum. Um, and and how that 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 all will play out both the middle school and high school. So. Uh, but she's still an assistant principal at the high school. That that didn't change.
So we have three, we have three assistant principals at the high school.
Yes, we have three assistant principals at the high school, absolutely.
And Peter?
Assistant principals at the middle school.
How many? I'm sorry?
Three.
Three, okay.
And I would say with regard to to Ms. McGuire, she, um. She does help to to coordinate the professional development. Uh, as a cohesive department for the counselors. Um, and she did help us, um, with a special project at the, um. At the latter part of last year, uh, trying to to get our schedule to work. She's got particular, uh, expertise in the area of power school scheduling, so.
Sure does. She's amazing.
Very glad for her assistance. I mean, she's she's absolutely full time at the high school, but we do steal her. Uh, a few hours here and there from time to time.
Okay, I was just, like I said, I saw something on Facebook, uh, not Facebook, on, uh, the Grotton Public School website. I just wanted to, uh. Just wanted to make sure that I had the structure in my my head correctly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the administration organization from the board? If not, can we move to the day in the life? I feel like there should be some like background music.
Do you all blood out?
So who wants to start?
Alexa.
So the schedules for the middle school are first, um. I'm not sure if I should share screen or Mr. Russell's gonna put that screen up. Just let me know.
You'll have to do it. I don't have the.
Very good, okay. Give me a second here.
While you're setting up, this was an idea. The board members had said, we just want to see a day in the life. Like, what does, what does the student? Have for an A day, a B day? What does their schedules look like? So we got some sample schedules through Power School. To show you kind of a sample of six, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth.
Quick question?
Go ahead.
Um, with the bus situation. Is it a possibility that we could change the, um, for the high school to take the CTL and put it at the beginning? I mean, if it, if we're really having a trial struggle here with buses and stuff. I mean, I'm just throwing it out because I notice.
You're thinking like a high school teacher and they've been thinking along the same lines for temporary.
What can I say, hon? What can I say? It's been my life, you know? Well, I'm just looking here and it says Advisory Six with Mrs. Panucci. And I'm saying, and then I look at the grade ten and it says, you know, first period is. For grade ten is a, it is a a course and then the next one is another course and then the CTL after two periods. And I'm like. Well, if we adjust that for those high schoolers. It's just my thought. I just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you.
Same thought.
I could speak to that when we get, once we get to the high school schedules.
Thank you.
All right. So what you have in front of you is a a s- a sixth grader's schedule. Um, we operate on an A B schedule, so every other day is an A day and, uh. Also, every other day is a B day, right? So, um, in in this situation, we can see that on Monday. The student has the same exact classes as, uh, Wednesday and as on Friday. So for sake of argument, let's call. Uh, Monday, Wednesday and Friday of this week in A day. And Tuesday and Thursday, B days. Now, um. Just to familiarize yourself a bit more with an A B schedule. Because we started Monday with an A, Tuesdays a B, Wednesdays an A, Thursdays a B, Fridays an A. The following Monday, should we be in school on a Monday, would be a B day. So it just continues A B, A B, A B. If we happen to have, uh, a Monday scheduled off for a holiday, we just skip that. We don't say that that was supposed to be an A. So, um, now we're gonna make it, uh, be no, we just, we just continue A B, A B, A B throughout the year with our schedule. The sixth grader, um, you know, it says advisory, that's their homeroom period. Uh, with Miss Panucci to start each and every day, which we believe is a really important part. You know, students need to have, uh, consistency at the middle school level, someone they can check in so with someone they trust. Uh, to get their 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 needs met, their questions answered, to start their day in a predictable way, which is really important for. Um, for their so- so- social and emotional well-being. Um, this did on on Monday goes to art. Um, and then off to Spanish. They have marine biology, which is, um, a sixth grade elective.
So those are two half blocks. The full block is more like eighty minutes and the half blocks are more like forty.
Correct. So we can see here that, uh, the 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 block long classes are eighty-four minutes, which. Art is in this case, Spanish is a a period long class, all right? It goes for about forty minutes. Marine biology also forty minute class. And then science is a block eighty-four. And, um, language arts is a block. Now you might say yourself, why is art a block? And Spanish is only forty, it's well. Art is actually the one of the few classes in the entire schedule which operates on the quarter. So they only get a a quarter. Worth of art and then in the the the, um. The adjacent quarter, they get a a block of, um. ATL school, ATL skills and NYPD course.
And I think an important feature to this schedule, Peter, is that sixth graders, we want them to have the full steam experience. So we really want to give them opportunity in all the unified arts in the la- in the world language. So that they really have, when they go to make some choices, they'll be able to have had those experiences.
Right, we, they don't have, we we want them to be able to explore in each of the steam areas. In their sixth grade year so that then then they can then expand in their seventh and eighth grade years, um. Accordingly. All right, so on the B day Tuesday, social studies eighty-four minutes. Course, uh, that is also a block eighty-four minutes. P E eighty-four minutes and math eighty-four minutes. All right, and you can see again, Monday, Wednesday and Friday are identical schedules. Tuesday and Thursday are identical as well. We have the A B. Now, some of these classes are year long, some are, uh, a quarter or semester. Um, almost all are year long or semester. Spanish in sixth grade is a semester long and. In the opposite semester, they take French. Again, we want them to have, um, exposure and be able to explore. Both languages before they make a decision on which language they want to study in seventh and eighth grade. Um, marine biology, that is semester long. Uh, the the cores, the science, math, language arts, social studies, these are all year long classes. P E is a semester long. And that rounds out this sixth grade schedule. Seventh grade. See, again, they start off, this is an A B schedule again. They start off with advisory, their whole room. Uh, this student on Monday starts a day broadcasting. Um, and this is a a course, uh, that. They learn all about broadcasting, exactly that. We've got an awesome, awesome studio. Mr. Brew teaches, teaches that course. Um, then they go on to a project, Lead the Way course, Magic of Electrons. They have orchestra with Miss Gray. And they finish the day with Miss Johnson and Social Studies. And again, you can see that, um. For Monday, each of these classes is eighty-four minutes long. Now, on Tuesday, this student. Uh, start today in Advisory Home Room. They have language arts for eighty-four minute minutes. They have multimedia. Uh, one and that class is forty minutes. Then they have Spanish seven for forty minutes. Student has advanced math for a full block eighty-four minutes. And finishes the day on Tuesday with a block eighty-four minutes of science. And again, it wrote, it it alternates A A days, uh, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday here and and this week. B day, Tuesday, Thursday, these are identical schedules on those two days.
And by seventh grade, they're selecting either Spanish or French at this time.
Correct, so now.
And it goes all year long.
Correct, yep, you're exactly right. Um, so we have, um. You know, broadcasting, magic of electrons, those are semester long classes. Whereas, um, a- as is multimedia one, but again, the cores, um. Are are year long and, um. Orchestra also is year long.
And you see a lot of this student's choice in their decision. Of the courses that they're taking. The cores are all, of course, a given. Um, in the the main core I areas, but you can see some of the selections that a seventh grader is making.
Right.
Arts and in the, in the STEM area.
All right, so and the eighth grade, you're the eighth grader. As Miss Quashley for their advisory home room period each of the days. Again, it's an A B. Mondays are the A days in this scenario and Tuesday, Thursdays are the B days. Um, this student, uh, from home room then goes to, uh, math intervention. So it gets forty minutes of math intervention. Uh, with Mr. Miller and then gets forty minutes of of health. And fitness in the way, in in this situation, they get a quarter of health and then, um, Mr. Yellen will then. Uh, give them a quarter of fitness. This is a semester long course. Um, this is in addition to getting a full block of P E in their eighth grade year for a semester. So it's not the only P E that they will have. It's actually in addition to the full. Which this student does not have in this semester, so they would have the full block of P E in the next semester. So again, so the the first block, the two periods, uh, within that block, um, yeah. Tier two math and then health and fitness, followed by in the eighth grade year, they get a full block of the world language. So they move, um, the student is teaching, taking French one. Um, which is a high school level class with Miss Dover. And then the student has selected musical theater. Um, which is a full block class and ends the day with a full block of language arts. On Tuesday.
For an NYPD middle school, this is very appropriate to have world languages a core in your eighth grade.
Absolutely. On Tuesday, they start the day in whole room, uh, and then they have a full block of math. Full block of science. They have a full block of a project lead the way course called Automation and Robotics. And then a full block of social studies and that rounds out, um, a semester's. Um, worth of the schedule, the things that would change, um, on the semester, um, could be. Math, uh, the tiered math, we we. They would have the option, depending on how they did of of. Potentially selecting a different course other than the math intervention. Uh, health and fitness, they would get to choose another elective in the other semester. Um. And the rest would remain the same. Musical theater, they would also have the option to choose an additional elective in the, um. Other semester, but the core is like, like, uh, as Austin said, including this. The world language, uh, those are constant for block throughout the entire year. So those are some examples of a sixth, seventh and eighth grade schedule.
Peter, when when do they have lunch?
They have lunch if you, thanks for asking that question, Rita. They have lunch during third block, which is periods five and six. You can actually see that. It is a bit longer than eighty-four minutes. Um, it's actually, uh, I think twenty-eight minutes longer. In that third block and we have four lunch waves to accommodate our students and make sure that they are appropriately spaced in the cafeteria.
Great. And how lo- how long is lunch?
Uh, lunch is twenty. Twenty-eight minutes per wave.
Andrea?
Uh, Peter, how many electives would a, I have two questions. One is, how many electives would a a student have? By the time they went through the three years?
Ooh, that's a, I've never had that question before, Dr. Ackerman. So, um. In the sixth grade, we want them. But I get one, I guess it depends on your definition of an elective, right? In sixth grade, they have, uh, the four core subjects plus a period of world language in a semester. They also will have art and P E and and music experience. Um, they probably would have the opportunity, depending on if they needed, uh, any intervention or resource to potentially take a, um. A project lead the way course, sixth grader, sixth graders also get coding. Um, all sixth graders take a a semester of coding. Um. So they get a few in the in the sixth grade, they get a few in the seventh grade, they get a few in the eighth grade. Ultimately, Dr. Ackerman, it comes down to. Two major factors, one. Their area of need, the the, um, their level of need for support. And then their areas of interest. We want to make sure that their areas of support. Are addressed, but we also want to balance that with things that they're interested in. So, you know, if a student does need math support or does need language art support. Or does have an I P which requires, uh, resource on on, uh, every other day basis, those those things will take priority. Um, but they still have.
Could you get me, um, you know, a a student's schedule? Uh, I don't really need the schedule because this is, you know, this could be written in. Some other language, but, uh, could you get me like a a student who has just a regular schedule? And tell me how many by the time he, that child gets through middle school, how many electives he would have? And, uh, a child who has special needs or, um, you know, uh, some accommodations, how many? How many, um?
Sure, I I can get that for you. It will, it will be a range.
Yeah.
Based upon whether or not the electives they've selected are block long or period long. Okay, but I'd be happy to get that for you.
Thank you. My second question is, I I just went through the, uh, the the folder that we we, uh. Because I don't remember seeing broadcasting. And I, again, I went through the folder of all the courses that we re- we reviewed and I don't see broadcasting.
Yeah, that one wa- that one was approved, uh, a few years back prior. Um, it was not one that, uh, we believe needed updating at at this time.
That was when they were covered and they were this, they were the arts and humanity magnet that we started the broadcasting.
But. But I would say, Dr. Ackerman, that, um. It would be appropriate for us to look at that to make sure it's still, um, is. Pertinent in terms of the amount of time students are spending in that class as opposed to what they were previously. So that's something we can certainly take a look at. To make sure that, you know, see if it needs any revision as a result.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the middle school schedule before we move on? Rita?
I have another question.
I have another question, Peter. In terms of the teachers. When we um had a middle school. Schedule before this schedule.
Yes.
Teachers had one free period of their own and there was one um collaborative team meeting.
Each day.
Each day. So how is, how does this fit into the schedule and, and do they still have those periods?
They do not. We had to reduce the amount of planning time teachers had when we went to this new schedule.
So huh, what is the planning time and our?
So they get, so teachers get one block of um. They get to self-direct that planning time daily. Every other day, the core teachers. Math, science, social studies and language arts have a, a period of common planning time. So they get. Uh, roughly forty minutes of common planning time every other day.
And one block every other day of.
One block daily of self-directed planning.
Oh, daily. Okay.
Yep. So it's, it's reduced, it's reduced from the former schedule. They don't, they don't, they no longer get a. What some people like to call personal plan and a collaborative plan on a daily basis. Now they have um. That, that collaborative time has been reduced um both in the length of time and also the frequency to be every other day for forty minutes.
And I have to say, one of the benefits is on the other half of the, that period is that our. Classroom core teachers are actually providing the intervention that our students need in those core areas. So. That's really a big benefit. Well, their teachers are providing the intervention in an additional time. So kids are still getting all their core instruction. And all of their unified arts and electives, but there's a period built in. That could be their magnet dosage or it could be an intervention. So nobody's missing out. And everybody's getting what they want and what they need.
Which is different than the high school's schedule.
We're gonna be looking at that too.
Yeah, elementary.
And elementary.
I'm, I'm happy to play the role of Ted's Vanna White here. I'll just keep scrolling up.
So I got Andrea, do you have another quick question?
One question, Peter, when you send me that, uh, what you're gonna send me, would you include like a, a blank teacher's schedule? So I can see where those. Those um, planning periods come.
Sure, be happy to.
Yeah, you're seeing just the student's schedule, you're not seeing the teacher's schedule. So that's a different venue, a different look at it.
Maybe you could send me a special feature and a, a, a core teacher.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, ninth grade.
Okay, so um, it just going through the, the ninth grade schedules, this uh typical ninth grade schedule. Um, a- a- as Peter does, we have the A days and B days, um, and I just lost it there. Um, so um, one thing I just want to speak first about um. Uh, Ms. Porter's uh point uh regarding the C T Ls. Um. So there was some thought about what was happening with the buses uh coming in a little late and we didn't want to lose instructional time. For first period and I, and while we're, we didn't want to change our whole schedule around. Uh, hoping that this is going to be temporary and that we're gonna uh, we're, we're solving the issues that we are solving with the buses. So. One of the things you'll see first of all is you'll see on this schedule that the day starts at seven forty. Um, and that's still, that's still the case. However, the times are a little bit wrong in the schedule because this was made before we had made this change. So what we have done is we actually have increased our first period class by ten minutes. And we are running a essentially a home room period in our first period class from seven forty to seven fifty. And we are starting instruction at seven fifty and running the full seventy-five minutes. In order to compensate for that, right now we have decreased our C T L time by ten minutes. And so everything gets solved by the time we get to our third period class. So students are not marked late right now until seven fifty. Um, so that we are not penalizing students for late buses and so on. And that we are not losing instructional time in first period. Today was literally the first day of that. It worked fairly well. Um, and uh, we seen a definite reduction on the number of students that are getting marked late. Uh, obviously we're not penalizing students for late buses, but uh it solved kind of that problem and we're making sure that we're getting a full first period in. Uh, and so uh, again, um. Once we work out some of these uh, these, these bus challenges, uh, if we can, we certainly go back to our regular schedule. Uh, but the uh, right now, we are running that first period until nine oh five uh in order to compensate for that right now. So um, so for this uh particular student, their A day on Monday, integrated science, algebra one. They have that C T L period. Now the C T L period uh right now. Um, normally the C T Ls are matched up and we'll talk a little bit about that for their collaborative planning time for our teachers. Uh, we're not doing that right now. We're keeping the C T L small. Um, that's primarily for our mitigation strategies and making sure that we're keeping uh, uh, less students in the classroom. But we certainly are hoping as we go into October that we're going to be able to start combining C T Ls and giving our teachers some collaborative time together. Uh, and I could talk more about that in a little bit. Um, English nine and world history. So you can see that on that first uh A day, that students got a lot of their core classes. Um, most of their core classes on that day. Um, on a B day, they have American Sign Language, again, a year-long class. Uh, animation is an elective class. Um, the C T L again, uh, personal health, which is then going to be matched up with their. Uh, personal health would run first uh semester for this particular student and then they'd have their P E class second semester. And then first semester, they have the freshman academic seminar, uh, which they're learning those study skills and uh. Those things they need to know to be successful in high school, uh, and that would be matched up with the global citizenship class. Uh, their, their second semester. So um, so second semester, that third and fourth period, they would have P E and the uh. Uh, the global citizenship class, it could be at either one of those periods. It doesn't necessarily have to match up with the, the period that the, those two classes are in. So um, that's a typical ninth grade schedule, one of our students. Um, going into the tenth grade. Uh, again, fairly typical schedule, you'll see a few more electives uh in the, in the tenth grade than you will in the ninth. Um, so here again, uh, you have jewelry and metals is an elective class, uh, an elective art class, U S history, the C T L with Mr. Morse. Uh, and then uh, obviously English and um, and the science and, and the uh. Second part, again, I did not mention that the third period does encompass the students' lunch as well. Um, so the student will have either one, uh, first, second, third or fourth lunch. Uh, in this particular case, students on the first floor, so they would have first lunch. Uh, so generally the lunches, other than some of the science classes and a few other uh specialized classes, we want to make sure that we have a, a strategy where the lunch would be. Uh, first floor goes to first lunch, second floor goes to second lunch, third floor goes to third lunch and the bitch's week goes to fourth lunch. It's pretty simple on, on where you go. Um, again, B day, video production, uh, the math class, C T L. Uh, safety and wellness is a, uh, again, the uh health class uh for the tenth grade. And then this is an American Sign Language as well. So they, they have a world language, uh, American Sign Language class. So. Um, and then again, just goes A day, B day and just kind of repeats itself as we go along. Uh, eleventh grade, again, continuing to see some more elective uh choices. Uh, this particular student is taking photography and weight training as, as uh some elective courses. Uh, gaming narratives as well, uh, is a, is a English elective. Um, continuing on with their Spanish and during that B day first period, uh, continuing with the C T L again. Um, and you'll also see the civics class, which obviously we, we want to make sure our students are, are participating in civics as well. Um, so again, fairly typical schedule, but you'll see a little bit more in terms of the electives uh in the, in the uh eleventh grade. Now, the one thing that uh, if you look at this twelfth grade schedule, um, this is a pretty full twelfth grade schedules. You, you see that, you know, some twelfth grade schedules are fairly full and some twelfth grade schedules uh will have some free periods in them. Uh, so this, the seniors would have some open periods. Again, we do rotate our schedule. So uh, if a senior had a free period, let's say third period, an open block, uh, third period. That would rotate uh and be in a different position at, at different times during the year. Um, to either give them an opportunity for late arrival or early dismissal at certain times. Um, this particular student has decided to go with full schedule. You can see they have honors travel choir. Uh, they're designed to take photo as well. Um, continuing on with the math credit, continuing on with social studies credit. Um, uh, you know, decide to take food. So uh, uh, they're continuing with their, their, their full schedule. Um, in addition to that, you can see that this particular student has decided to take an online course. Um, that could either be uh due to uh the wanting to get credit recovery. Or deciding to take a course that we maybe don't offer uh in person at the school. So. Uh, you can see that third period, they have that Apex Virtual Academy, which is then going to give them support to do that online course and, and uh, and hopefully uh. Uh, help them be a little bit more successful with it. So um, so this again, this twelfth grade student has decided to do a, a full schedule. That's not. You know, I, I wouldn't say that it's not typical. We have many twelfth graders that do that, but we also have twelfth graders that would have a free block during their particular, one of their days. So um, so that's uh, um, basically the, the schedule. Uh. Again, just talking a little bit about the, the uh, the collaborative time, um, the plan is going forward that uh our C T Ls again are paired up. Um, that two days a week, the teacher would um have the C T L uh together. Two days a week, uh, the teacher would be allowed to, to take that time and be, uh, have collaborative planning time. A structured collaborative planning time with their department. And one day a week, these uh, they have uh kind of their advisory activities for in their C T L. Um, so uh, they, the, we have uh some uh social emotional learning that uh lessons that we're, we're working with our C T L partners with. So. Um. That, that again is the plan. Uh, it's set up to do that right now, but as I said, right now, due to our mitigation strategies and make sure we keep the classes small. Uh, we're, we're continuing to just have the C T Ls uh stay by themselves at this point. Uh, and we're going to do our collaboration right now during our uh, um, their regular planning time and then their uh. Uh, the obviously the, the professional development time that they have uh normally.
Questions in regard to the high school schedules?
I do. Ted, um. I've only been on board for a little over almost two years now. So I may, this may be already something that you already know. I mean, it's already been passed, but gaming. Curriculum and the safety and wellness curriculum are those. Um, when were those, do you, you know, have any information about those? Were those? Or is anybody who's out there that knows these things, Dr. Ackerman, are those, do those, do you recognize those courses? Oh, okay. Never mind. Ignore me.
And the, the, the health and wellness is just the regular health curriculum. It's just the name of the course, uh, and the, uh. Uh, gaming again was up there when I got here. It's before my time, but, but it is curriculum as I understand.
Thank you.
It is.
Believe it's an English elective.
Kim, if I could say, I, I had the same reaction of Liz that you did when I heard it. But after listening to the uh, the teachers talk about what they were going to do, it made perfect sense. Just to assure you.
Peter and Ted, thank you for going over like what, I know it seemed tedious for, but like I just, it's kind of nice. You're kind of cool to hear what our students are kind of on the campus level is kind of doing. So I really appreciate you guys spending a bunch of time with us tonight. Cause I'm sure that's exactly where you want to be. Um, but I.
Just one comment I wanted to say Kim is that I, I, and maybe Peter can comment as well. I mean, in our positions, oftentimes we don't get to take a look at a day in the life of a student and so it was kind of nice for us to look at as well. So uh, you know, it's a. I think it was a, a kind of an interesting exercise that we could look at, you know, different schedules and how things are fitting together for particular students.
Great. I'm, I'm super excited about that. And I'm also super excited to hear about the I B program. Um, so take it away, guys.
Actually invited Kathy Wilson to join us this evening or. M Y P coordinator. Kathy, are you here?
I am, but the host has start, stopped my video.
Oh.
Thanks a lot, Mark. I know how you feel about me. So I'm not exactly sure what you want to hear. Do you want me to just go over the big ideas of the program and uh? You know, I mean, many of you have been involved in this right from the get-go. So you know, I mean, in Liz, you really started it in Groton, so.
Oh, thanks, Kath.
So I, I, you know what, I think um, I, we saw that as the, as, as our link for the campus, right? Like it really kind of gives us that, that place where, where the campus really weeds. I mean, I think Mark Romano does that. Would be with the athletic director, but like the I B, you were the like, you're, you're our link. And I guess, I, I think when. Um, we were thinking about this discussion and, and board members please um. Uh, chime in is that we're real, just kind of looking about how's that going? How is that six through twelve now that you guys are both sitting on the hill?
Well, I, I think the six through ten is more my.
Thank you, Kathleen. Yep.
Point. And we have, I mean, it's, it's going to be really, really great. It's already getting great. Um, it's equity and access for, to rigorous and relevant instruction for every student six through ten. And that will give them that, that confidence to go on with the D P program or C P. Because that career program is going to be fantastic also. That might be something that students will um. Look at is like, I don't want to go to college right immediately after Fitch. I want to go to E B for a little while. I want to have the skills to work in a healthcare facility. I want to have some I T skills and then maybe. I'll, I'll take my college career to another level. Um, but it's just, it's just inquiry based with the, just the real world connection. And um, to have it six through ten and those, the curriculum coordinators have been fantastic. Um, Kelly Donovan has also worked very closely with me as far as setting up a pullout schedule. So teachers get. A significant amount of time to work together. Um, the P D that we did before um, the school year started. Went really, really well and that was all vertically aligned. Um, it's just. Uh, you know, I think it's really going to be the, the catch to bring, you know, keep people in the district. But also maybe bring people to move into Groton instead of going to uh outside towns. Um, because it's such a great instructional framework.
Wow, what do we just salt to sell it? I mean, like just, it sounds so exciting. I am just.
We actually do have a couple of students from other districts who are paying the per pupil. Um, expenditure to come to Groton because of our international baccalaureate. You know, it's one of the few that has both middle school for everyone all the way through tenth grade. And then the international baccalaureate diploma and careers program. And there's been some suggestion that maybe there could be some P Y P someday for the primary year. So. You know, um, it's very exciting. I think the work that Kathy has done with Kelly and with all the colleagues. You know, we certainly learned a lot and there's an assessment feature there too, that's more than an A, B and C. It really gives the, the students a rubric and it, it helps them to grow. So as they're assessed and they learn more about what they need to do better, their project or whatever they're working on improves. So it's not just, you got an A, you're good, you gotta B, you gotta C. You know, there are actually room to grow and to learn from what they've been assessed on. So I think that's exciting too.
And, and Andrea, you've been in the workshops and seen the presenters um train our teachers. The teachers are amazing because it's a shift. It's a shift to put the onus on the child to do the learning, but the teacher facilitates it. They plan really heavy. And then they, they put that inquiry-based instruction or the, the problem into the kid's lap and the kids have to solve it. And uh, that's real world. I mean, that's what we're, we had to do all last year. You know, everybody, nobody knew this was coming and now we adapted, we adjusted and that's what we want our students to do too.
I am. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you're doing on that.
Are you speechless, Kim?
I just. I am just so excited about this program.
Me too.
Well, this program, if I can speak a little bit, if you don't mind for a second, um. It is a, is the hallmark and it's become the lighthouse on the hill for Groton Public Schools. And I will tell you, it is being noticed around the state. I am involved with of course National History Day, as you know. And I hear about Groton Public Schools in Torrington. So we are getting noticed and we're getting noticed in a positive way, which is wonderful. You know, so this is something that we can build on. And um, when I, when you mentioned the P Y P, you know, I'm right there and we need.
And we need because a K to K to 12 continuum. Is the most supportive way of having our kids find success. And the world of education is changing. And this is, this program has been internationally recognized. Our kids can now compete in international universities. I mean, it's a, to me, it's amazing that, you know. One of my former students actually got started her year at B U, I think it was Boston University. As an 18 year old graduate from Fitch, she started as a second semester sophomore.
Wow.
So that does, that also speaks to the fact that this is also a program that will give our students a leg up. And it's, you know, when you talk about financially, let's face it. But to have these skills taught to students from the very beginning. From their ability to analyze, their ability to collaborate, their ability to take a problem and problem solve. These are, like you say, Kathy, real world experiences. And it's something I'm so, I'm so proud that we support this type of education. So. I'm going to get off my horse, but you know, I just want you to say, I just want you to know. From my own personal experience. There's nothing better out there, in my opinion, but that's me.
Thank you.
I just have to add, they're very jealous in New Haven, too.
Thank you, Rosemary.
I I'd just like to say that I. I I was in on this since the very germ of this idea hatched in Dr. Gner's. Brain. And I watched the program grow and to see this Wilson and Mrs. Donovan just. Their skills and their 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 thinking are just the the backbone of this and the creative. Genius of it. So I wanted to recognize them and to say that, you know, we really did our research before we went into this. And it's it's been exciting to watch. And I would like to be included in more professional development in that area. So let me know when it happens.
Okay.
Kudos to you.
Me too, Kathy. Me too. You know.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the I B? Rita. Rita, you I need to be unmuted.
Sorry. This is the last year of our grant, correct?
Yes.
So. When we go forward with our budget in the fall and the winter. How, you know, will will there be a great deal of finances that we're going to have to find monies to fund all these? The different programs.
With the help of Susan and with the help of Susan and Dr. Grunier. We created a sustainability budget prior to his retirement. And so we have that already budgeted. Although Susan is killer at getting grants, so we might.
We have another one coming up that includes. The I B C P work. It's a careers one in STEM. And it'll be formally announced very soon. And we actually have Shannon on the agenda to tell you a little bit more about it.
I mean, you're waiting to hear.
Well, we already know it's coming, so we'll hear more about it tonight. But it's not formally announced and we do know there's a process in the town.
Right. But but Rita, to your, thank you for for your point, which is. This is really great and we're speaking really highly of it, but what's the plan for moving forward? And thank you for letting them answer. That we as a board has been very clear about the fact that we'll we'll take anything, but we have to have it sustained if we want it. It has to be sustainable. So Rita, thank you for offering that up. Anything else about the I B? All right. So we're off to the E D Rising Program. Adam, thank you for coming. And just to give a little bit of a backdrop before that happened, we were in, there was a group of us who are on the negotiations team. Adam started talking about that and we were like, oh, wait, wait, wait a second. The rest of the board had had has not heard, we have not heard about this and it really needs to kind of go through the board. So. So Adam, thank you for talking about it for a length of time and negotiations. And I'm hoping that you're willing to continue to talk about that. Tonight. So if you can introduce the program, that would be great.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm really, really, really excited to be talking to all of you about Ed Rising. Or Educators Rising. It's the longer word for it. And really, what it what it is, is is something that we used to have in Groton at Fitch. We used to have something called Pathways to Teaching. And it essentially was, it was after school or during the day. An advisor would would work with a group of students who were highly interested. In pursuing, you know, the education career cluster in the future. And so basically what they did is that, you know, through the advisor, they would meet, they would discuss strategies. And essentially, they would they would go down to the elementary schools and work with with younger students. That has since, you know, it kind of. Simmered away and and we'd love to get this back. Back in in play really through the Ed Rising, several reasons. We, you know. We're looking at it and realizing that often, you know, our students are often exposed to so many other clusters. But but not often exposed to our very own, our the teaching profession. And we don't do a lot of talking about it. So I think in that in that one sense, I think we need to talk about it a little bit more. And expose our students to that it is a very rewarding career. And and there's a lot of our students who have the natural talent to pursue this. And so it's really a tool to allow them to experience. The opportunity before making decisions to go to college and so on and so on. There are so many other more advantages to this opportunity as as a club. You know, it involves, it gets our students going to other other schools. But ultimately, it really will open up their eyes to even ask questions from our very, our own teachers, school councils, administrators. About if they're interested in that in that career. Ultimately, they have at right at their, right at their feet, an opportunity to explore this this cluster. And I heard, you know, Ms. Wilson talking about clusters that we that we have at Fitch. I think certainly this would be a great opportunity for us to also begin as a club and then eventually certainly. Make it something where maybe they could take a course, but we're in the beginning stages. Would love to start this as an opportunity for students who may be interested, certainly want to really promote it. With with all students. Really, this also is embedded in the diversity, equity, inclusion commitment that we have as well to get recruit and keep. Many students that perhaps can come back and teach in our own very own district. That in a nutshell is really what we're trying to do with this club and at least start it, at least get get our students involved in it. We have teachers who are very excited to to begin the process. And certainly students at that meeting, Kim, I did share an experience where during freshman orientation, one of our seniors. Is it was volunteering to speak to our freshmen about, you know, what makes Fitch Fitch. The expectations and often, as we know best, students do a better job of presenting that than than the teachers often. So, you know, we were talking and say, hey, what are you going to do next year as a senior? And one of the things she mentioned was, you know, I really don't know. I'd like maybe to go into teaching. And I said, well, what are your plans after? Is it is it colleges or this? Yeah, I'd like to do that. Then that that just hit me at that very moment. I. Told her about this upcoming opportunity. And she got the biggest smile on her face. And she has asked me three or four times now, if passing, when is this getting started? And I said, well, be a little bit more patient. We'll get to it. But every day she has asked it and it and it puts a smile on my face because I love that. And if that's one student that knows about it, I know once we put this out. We're going to get a lot of students who are interested in it. So really, really a great opportunity for our students to explore our profession. So with that, thank you so much.
I'm gonna do Liz and then Andrea.
Adam, why was this in negotiations? Is it, is there a Schedule C that was being being asked for?
Yes, yes, we they we had to add them to the like clubs for stipends.
Are all clubs? Got paid advisors? All clubs? I don't know that answer. You think I would, but I don't.
I would, I would assume all clubs that are run by faculty get some type of stipend. Is that not correct, Susan or Phil?
Well, I would say at the elementary and even middle school, we do have in our operating budget and enrichment. Stipend so that we can provide. Art and physical education and STEM kinds of opportunities after school. Through our ARP S R, we've also included some funding for enrichment. So, you know, we could look at this as a stipend. We can look at it as an enrichment. We'd have to look at the ARP S R specifically. But we could start it in a few ways. You know, I think it would involve a lot of time from a teacher after school. So, you know, it would be. One way or the other, you would want to take care of that time and that commitment.
I think my question is, is that. Clubs in general, middle school clubs, high school clubs. Enrichment programs, are they all covered under the contract under a Schedule C?
Not all with the, well, the Schedule C does have an enrichment opportunity for teachers. But it's kind of more in an opportunity of eight sessions. That that signifies what that stipend is. So that's what we've been using for some of the, well, for the elementarys and some of the middle.
Curious. Okay, thank you.
Andrea.
Maybe you could ask Beth Holder to speak to that. She's on or or actually one of the principals would know.
I can tell you that there there are several clubs that are run by teachers at the middle school. And they do not receive a stipend for. Or as Susan said, there are the contractual ones. You've got yearbook. Student council, newspaper, and then there are some opportunities for for shorter sessions of enrichment. But we've got a number of clubs that that do not receive a stipend.
Some do and it and a lot of it depends on the commitment, the time commitment. Some clubs used to come out of a building based fund. As Susan was referring to, to the enrichment monies. So there are. Some of them are more nuanced than others, so that's where it is. But not all were were fully funded. For stipends, but. A lot are. We've been trying to get more support for those so we can offer expanded opportunities for students.
Thank you. I just was curious.
And we do have additional funding ARP S R, as you remember, the social emotional learning component and the enrichment component. Is really big in the ARP S R and we do have funds for some of those before and after school, whether it's in the way of tutoring. Or in the way of enrichment programming. So it's really federally funded.
But those funds will not are not sustainable. They're not going to be with us until. Right, okay, so I'm I'm thinking long term. Right, okay, thank you.
But I think this one is getting started as a club and we're hoping to see the interest so it may become a career pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea. That leads me to my question because today at the. At the curriculum council, I heard. This was my question to begin with, you know, Ed Rising and If You Love It, Teach It. And then I heard that at that council meeting, that If You Love It, Teach It, it could be an elective. So where are these two things? How do they, how are they emerging? I'm asking Adam, actually.
So the the club is going to spark that interest in that possibility of that class eventually. As as an opportunity for a career cluster. But it is, it is something, we're starting it as a club, create that that interest in in that opportunity and eventually it will get there.
And get where to?
To a possibility of it becoming a course later on.
And at that time, it would be If You Love It, Teach It, that's a whole different thing. And I just, if I could add something about the clubs, I know it's been many, many years since I've been there. But I and I'm sure it still goes on. You know, sometimes you get an idea and you think, oh, the kid will be really interested in this. Let me start a club and you go to the principal and you get a yes or no. And, you know, you don't expect to be compensated for that. It's your idea and so.
Or kids might come to you and have, they might have an idea too.
Yeah, so I'm sure that's still, Peter's shaking his head, so I'm.
Yeah, that still happens.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Adam?
Dean, absolutely.
Sure. I find it a laudable goal to try to expose kids to the idea of considering teaching. I will tell you that when I was probably a junior in high school and considering. Going on to major in physics, it happened to be nuclear physics. It sounds fancy, but I had just happened to be, I didn't know any enough. It just seemed like something I wanted to do. And an uncle of mine sat me down. He said, you know, unless you go all the way and get a PhD. You might wind up being a high school teacher. Now you tell a junior in high school that. So he said, if you, if that doesn't appeal to you. Then you should consider going into engineering where you'd need a bachelor's degree. You won't have to worry about getting a doctorate and so on. So I I think I think I speak for probably most of my classmates. Teachers are the people who wanted to get away from, it's not something we wanted to do. Now, having said that, there are kids who do look up to teachers. They do like the idea. For whatever reason, the kids want to get into things. But, you know, I have to spend the years with a teacher, you know, you can understand why my kids might want to go move away from that one. A lot of times people come back. So I'm all for exposing kids. Probably they're already interested in going to be teachers. I'm sure there have been efforts in the past, there have been programs, homegrown programs, perhaps programs put together from the outside. This looks like it's been put together from the outside. It's a product of P D K International. If we were to form a club, my understanding is we would be a chapter of Educators Rising. Of this, this product, these services of P D K, P D K International. They actually promote themselves over unnamed competitors, the advantages of this program versus other programs. So my question first is, you know, are there other programs like this? According to P D K. Again, unnamed, there are other programs out there. They're just better according to by their lights. Two, much more sensitively, I think. I'll just come right out and say that if I'm looking, for example, at a sample lesson plan. Materials in Educators Rising quite often make references to anti bias. It seems very heavily into anti bias training and so on. There is lots of lots of references to social justice. It's a component. It's meant to be an all inclusive kind of a thing, you know. And I do, I am aware of people who are in the education business, shall we say. People who are in the business of teaching other teachers, who philosophize about it, et cetera, who are the thinkers in the field. Who have no problem considering. Teaching as just another branch of politics, which they consider to be a positive thing. And I'll come right out and say that when I see the phrase social justice, I do not think of justice. I think of someone's politics, which is fine. But let's acknowledge what it is. So the last thing that I would like to see. Is a program that is meant to raise awareness of kids. About the possibilities of teaching as they move forward in their education. And as a byproduct. You know, they have volunteer opportunities, which just so happen to be with. Political organizations, social justice organizations, et cetera. I don't like blurring these lines. I don't like bringing this into our. Into our schools. I realize I may be quite alone in this. And while we talk about having diversity of viewpoints, I'm also sure we really mean that. So I'm throwing this out. I I do not like some of the phrases before we move forward, whether it's funded or unfunded, I would prefer. A deeper study into this. I'd like a focus on developing future teachers. There we are, not the other stuff that I've seen in the chart. That's just me.
Dean, thank you for doing your research.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of research, I, you know. It's not a lot of research. I, you know, I.
Well, um, at one time Fitch had a wonderful program for teachers. And I know my son was involved in going down to Knowing School. And they were matched up. He had a buddy that was in kindergarten and sort of stayed with him through um, you know, everything. And, and they um still connect today. But they, Fitch had a great program. I know Beth knows what it was called at that time. Um, where the, you know, but it was a little difficult when they changed to block scheduling. They no longer could um have the, like a, a senior have a third, a fourth period off where they were able to go down and, you know, in school time. But even after that, we continued having it for quite a long time. So um, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that program. Probably Beth knows it the most because I know Butler was involved in having high school children come down and seeing what teachers do. So it didn't have anything to do with a label like Education Rising. It was Future Teachers.
I think it's a teacher's assistance program. It was a teacher's assistance program and it was run through the guidance office. And um, I remember a number of my students were involved with that as well. And um, I hear what you're saying, Dean. I, I really do. Um, I do not like the idea of something being connected to um any type of political movement. If it's a teacher preparation, let's keep it teacher preparation.
I agree.
But that's just me. And I just wanted to interject that. Um, Beth, I think you just typed it in. It said teacher assistance program or TAP.
TAP. It was called the TAP program and um students came once or twice a week and assisted in the classroom. Sometimes they made materials and tried games out with kids and they always came and they read to students or they helped with centers. But it gave them a hands-on approach to helping with students and giving them an idea of what it was like working with children in the classroom. And uh the buses would bring them to our schools. But um Rita's right, when they moved to block scheduling, it became very difficult um to get students the time and the advisory time. And then um busing was, even back then was a little bit of an issue trying to get them to the building. So the TAP program fizzled out, so.
So maybe um Susan, you and Adam can do a little bit more further researching, making sure that this is not tied to a um, a political source or what they mean by social justice. To Dean's point, I actually see the word social justice differently, but I can totally understand where that, where that would seem like that's tied. So let's get some clarity on that.
We can do that.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're going to um use a program which makes sense in a sense, then that means that we're actually having some um, huh, oh, I can't remember. I, I'm not thinking of the word, sorry, but um some clarity about what, what's being done and it meets standards. Then I think that that makes sense, but we got to make sure that it's a, it's a clear, it's a clear.
It's a program that's come highly recommended from the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Right.
So, and I think it's an outreach program so that we can really encourage our own students to want to go into the field of education.
I'm all for it. I'm all for it, but let's make sure there's not some closed um political affiliations.
Yeah, I had not heard, but we'll, we'll investigate that.
Thank you. Andrea.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I have to say, Dean, when you said that you might wind up being a high school teacher, you got my, my shackles raised. However, um after I listened to what you had to say, you, you changed my mind entirely. So I'm happy we're going to pursue that.
I thought you said you're happy I didn't become a high school teacher.
No.
Well, that too.
All right. Anything else about um Adam's uh suggestion around the um Ed, Ed Rising? Oh, how about the first Lego League um robotic team? Yay.
So that's another idea for a club that Peter has, that has really been generated by teachers and kids. Because we have a robotics club at the high school and we're looking as, at a feeder program that might be really um exciting for middle schoolers. So Peter, I'm gonna let you take it away.
Thank you. Uh, you know, we, some people were asking, I think it was Liz asked the question, are, are all clubs uh stipended? And um, that's part of the reason we're here tonight. They are not. Um, I, I have invited Ms. Chapel to join us this evening to um outline a, a club that is near to dear to her heart. Um, and she can share with you uh what goes into it and um the time commitment especially um that it would entail uh looking to garner your support. So Ms. Chapel. I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, all of that was great segue. I was a student in Grattan for K to 12 and then came back to teach. This is my 34th year of teaching. Um, I'm currently at Grattan Middle School with Peter and I teach computer science and project lead the way courses um at the beautiful new school. But I'm actually here today, not to talk about me, but about something for our students. I'd like to tell you why Grattan Middle School, let me just, can I share my screen? So you have a visual.
You can.
Let's see. Um, why Grattan Middle School definitely needs First Lego League Robotics. Um, First Lego League is the middle school version of um the Fitch's alum, uh Aluminum Falcons Robotics Team. It, it follows the same framework as the high school. And I think we're all familiar with the benefits that our students and our community have received from that program. It's all run by First. Um, it is much more than a club. It could be a club, but it would not have the same impact as the program is in, in created to be. Um, it will, um, somebody had just said that it's, it will act as a feeder program to our high school. Um, and even more so, just create more excitement and more confidence and skills in that creative thinking and problem solving that are so desperately needed in our world today. Each year First unveils a new theme-related challenge. And this year's challenge is Cargo Connect. And it is revolving around transportation issues of safety, efficiency, connection and access. Um, there are four main components. Let's see. Um, to the competition. It, just like um the high school program, it is a competition that can go to the global level. Starts at the state level. Um, and it includes robot design, robot game, an innovation project and the core values, all the same framework that the high school follows. Um, the robot, the students work in teams first to design, build and program original Lego robots. Um, and the robot that they're designing will run on a regulation game board to complete up to 12 specific missions that will earn them points. Students will be interviewed at the competition by a panel of judges about their robot's design and the programming. Um, this is all student ownership. This is not something that the coaches are doing. The coaches are facilitating their thinking and their creation. Um, the highlight of the year for the students is the robot game. Let's see. And at the competitions, the students compete against other teams from all over the state to begin with. Um, to complete as many of those missions as possible in two and a half minute matches. Even more so, um addressing the inquiry aspect that we are fostering with our students. Um, the students are uh have to create an innovation project. Um, they have to identify themselves, a real world problem that's related to that year's theme. Um, create some questions, do the research, design their own solution and then present their project and their solution to a panel of judges and answering questions about their process as well as the solution that they came up with. They're also encouraged to present their solution to whatever community it, this solution would impact. Um, and let's see. The core values um component is what sets First Robotics apart from similar programs. I don't know how familiar you are with the core values that the high school follows. But um students are actively developing and learning to embody First Lego League's philosophies of teamwork and gracious professionalism um through the core values, which are discovery, innovation, impact, teamwork, inclusion, and can't see it, but it's fun. Um, at competitions, students will be asked to do uh some kind of a surprise but fun teamwork activity for a panel of judges and then answer questions related to their display of the core values in action. Now, first, in order to compete requires two coaches for each team of 10 students. Um, my hope is that um we will have up to 30 students participate um in the after-school program. But to begin with, only 10 will be able to officially compete. But our goal at the middle school is to eventually expand it to um expand the competitive aspect to all 30 students by adding volunteer coaches and mentors from the community. Um, also, high school students who are 18 can qualify to be coaches. Um, there is a big connection with the high school. I've already been in contact with high school students. Um, volunteerism is one of their values and that they're judged on. And they've already, um, I'm meeting with them Wednesday to talk about how they might be able to help uh mentor and coach our students as well. Um, it's a year-long program, much like the uh Falcons program. And the coaching positions will require a great deal of responsibility um and time commitment. We were just talking about all of that and what entails, you know, what, what justifies a stipend position. So I wanted to give you an idea of what we're asking coaches to do if they take this on. Um, teams meet for a minimum of two hours a week. Um, so it would be two after-school meetings. And at a coach's workshop this weekend, I asked around and many of the teams that are competitive are, they meet up to four hours a week and they include Saturdays. Some of them meet just on Saturdays, eight to 12. Um, but that would be down the road for us. So some of the requirements for a coach, they would have to plan and prep because they are going to be teaching robotic building and programming skills. They're going to have to facilitate the team's progress toward their goals, foster teamwork skills and core values. They'll help students find resources. And they'll keep the team on task. That's all during the uh planning for and uh executing the two hour, two hours a week. And in addition, they have to complete coaches' training and workshops. They will have to complete the first youth protection certification program. They will recruit students, um recruit and facilitate volunteers. They will have to create a schedule and coordinate events for the students. Um, they'll going to be responsible for clear communication with students, families and the volunteers as well as the community. And they'll have to arrange transportation for students to um a variety of events. And they'll have to order and maintain the supplies um and uh register the team with First Robotics. Um, let's see. So you can see that it is a huge undertaking. And I think this is um an invaluable experience that we could offer our Grattan Middle School students. And so what we're asking is for you're okay on this and to hopefully create two stipend positions for coaches for two individuals that are committed to getting the program off the ground and then growing it to all it can be. Um, thanks for giving me the time and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
It's also a year-long endeavor, I would imagine. And it would include probably trips to some of those events.
Yes, I.
That the coaches would be going to as well.
Exactly. I talked, I've been talking for a couple of years now with Mr. Moon from CK. And um we talked about getting together just to get our, my program off the ground, getting together with his and have some informal little events there with the CK students.
Oh, great.
That could eventually lead to our students mentoring those students. Who knows where it could lead in the um, and then hopefully um meeting with other um area schools that are doing it, that practice events. And um the qualifying events are in November and the state championship is in December. And then it goes on from there. Um, so then the rest of the year is working on developing those skills and providing more challenges for the kids and encouraging them to take things to the next level.
Right.
So.
Exciting.
So I just wanted to mention, my son, who graduated from Fitch last year, was in, um, was on the Falcons team. And it is, you know, one of the most incredible resources that we have in this area to expose children to engineering and computer science. And the, the leaders from um EB that um run that program, I mean, it just blew my mind, the amount of time and dedication. And you know, our team goes on to win like national, the national championship um often. So um I, have you been in touch with the folks that lead the Falcon team?
Yes, I have um with a couple of coaches and they have, the coaches up there and the mentors have different roles. So certain people have reached out to me that that's the part of their team role plus students. Katara Potabom from um, who used to be a Westside student, um has reached out as kind of the lead on the volunteerism piece. Um, and I, I have experience with the high school program as well. Um, with my son through um Beth Horler's husband was my hero in, uh during my son's years. And it, I, I can't even put into words the value that he got from it. It is a place where some kids, um, that's their, where they find their place that they belong. They didn't know if they belonged anywhere. Up until then, they felt awkward in other situations and other clubs and events and sports. And they found their home there. So um that's how I got started with this and going to events with the high school team. That brings up a point though. Um, the difference between, this was at Ledger High School, and the difference between Ledger's program and Fitch's program is immeasurable. Um, but Fitch has paid positions. Ledger had Mr. Horler, who volunteered and worked tirelessly and his whole life revolved around this. Um, and he was one person and he worked really hard at it. But I think in order to develop and grow a quality program, you're going to need to have some paid staff that are really, um, oh, he still does it, Beth. That's great. Um, but uh, yeah.
So I, I, I kind of want to, um, Sharon, thank you very much for adding um your input. But I um also just want to make sure that we follow some sort of Robert's rules. And this is a, a non, uh, this is a for board comment. But thank you for your, um, for your adding. And Beth, same with you. Um, I really, really appreciate that. Um, it, uh, by looking around the board or the faces of the board, it seems like we're really interested in pursuing. But I think what would be helpful is to kind of know what the process is. So if competition is going to start in December, I'm not sure that this means that we're going to be doing it this year. Is that correct?
Correct. I'm, my hope would be to, um, I've got in the works, I have um funds from the GEF. Gave me an extended grant and because of last year, we've kind of pushed it off. Um, so I have funds for the beginnings of the supplies that we need that will get us through the first couple of years. Um, and um for like teen t-shirts, some transportation funds will be in there.
When, when you say GF, do you mean the Grattan Foundation? You got a grant out of that?
Yes, from the Grattan Education Foundation. Yes, absolutely. The extended one, the, so they've, they've um pledged $5,000 toward this to help get it off the ground.
Okay.
The only thing that's not The only thing that's not in there is the compensation for the, the coaches.
Okay.
For the start of the program anyway.
Okay, Liz.
So it goes
Rita, Rita, I've, I've acknowledged Liz and then I'll do you.
So I'm a little confused. Are you asking us to consider putting this into our budget? Is that what you're proposing? Does that have to go through negotiations? I mean, I, I know that, I don't think we are at the point that we can say, yes, we're going to do this because it hasn't even been investigated. I appreciate everything that you're saying, but I'm thinking about, it's going to come through negotiations, at least finance and facilities. If it's going to impact the budget.
Yeah, 100%. And that in, in light of, I think, I, I was getting a little bit from the Ed Rising that it kind of went the other way around. And that's why I'm here to tell you about it. So you can be informed when, if it does go to negotiations. It is a program that I could pull things from and have a little club, but then it's going to be like once a week and I don't think it's going to have the same impact that this would have if we fully invest in the program.
So when you talk about fully invest, what are you talking about? Adding a class? Or are you adding, are you talking about this would be just a club activity?
This is a team. This would be more like a sport, I think.
Like, okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
So in, in August, they, to your, to answer your question, Kim, in August, they unveil the theme.
Right.
Well, they unveiled the theme back in May, so you can get psyched for it before the summer. And then mid-August, most teams gather that can to watch or they do now in the world of online. They meet online to watch the unveiling of what the, the missions will look like to get them all excited for it in mid-August. Then they hit the grounds running in, as soon as school starts, meeting. And then it's very intensive for the kids right through the, up to December when the state championship is.
Okay.
And to answer your question, I don't see that we are going to be prepared at this point to compete at the state level or anything like that. I'd love to give my kids the experience of a, an event. You know, an official event. But we have to see how quickly we can get this up and running and off the ground.
Okay. Rita?
Yeah, I, I was wondering how many teams are in Connecticut?
Ooh, that's a good question. I could find it out very quickly.
I would, I would appreciate that to see what their competition would be like in the state.
There's a lot.
And also, I
And a lot of schools have multiple teams.
I know the high school depends so much on their volunteers. You know, they're wonderful volunteers.
And, and we have
without them. I mean, they have a head coach stipend, they have an assistant coach stipend.
Yep.
But that's nothing.
Absolutely. And without volunteers from Dominion and Pfizer and EB and mentor these kids.
Yes.
Absolutely. And we would hope for the same level at the middle school as well.
I don't think you need to find the answer out tonight. I think, because this is, I'm going to ask a process, a, a process question. And I'm directing it to both you and to Susan, because I really can't direct anything. I would direct Susan. I, I, I think the board looks like we're really excited about this. And it would be nice to have heard, you know, to hear that historical piece, that this was a fantasy of yours, this was a dream of yours. You actually got money from the Grattan Foundation, the $5,000, and then kind of talk about what do you see leading up to next year? I'm assuming, I, I understand you, you want to do an event, but you're not going to be able to do, like, I, I can only speak for me, but there's no way that I would go ahead and prove for something for you guys to be ready for competition and
No.
There's just too many unknowns. So, so Susan, is it possible that we could have just kind of get like a, I'm not using the right words and I apologize about that, but like a portfolio where we can kind of see where she started with the idea, why the Grattan Foundation, some of the activities that she's hoping that $5,000 could do, and then can give us a budget so that we could then have financing facilities kind of take a look at that to make sure that it kind of is something that, yes, we absolutely could endorse and would want to put into our budget. And then we could then work. I know that we're in the midst of negotiations with teachers, but we can always add, I mean, like, there's always the, is it M? M Y, M, M, what is the?
Beth.
M, M O U.
Thank you. That word to the contract if we, if the board sees fit, but it would be kind of nice to kind of see sort of what, what the Grattan Middle School would like to kind of do with this program in this academic year and how to kind of push it forward and what it would look like in terms of volunteers. You know, that's, that's a really good point. A little bit more scaffolding, I think, of the information would be really helpful for us.
I can do that.
I like a starting business proposal.
Absolutely.
And I know we do have other resources with the ESSR funds and with our own operations for enrichment that could help us just to get that started, but we would need to know long-term. If we're starting it here, where do we want to be next year and the following year?
Exactly, because those funds from the GEF can get me off the ground, but it's not going to sustain a program.
Right.
Right.
And we might, and we might need to be thinking about that long-term because I, I get a little bit worried when we keep on saying ESSR funds, ESSR funds. Because first of all, they're not, they're not, they're not forever. But, 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 but this sounds really exciting and I just am, for one, just really thankful for your energy and willing to kind of stay until eight o'clock to present your, present your program. But if, if there's no other further questions, I think that that, they need to go back and do their business and, and come back to, with us with a proposal that we can then shoot to the financing facilities. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, I, I, I say yes. Susan, Peter, Ted. Of all the things that we are thinking about is not working well in this world, to hear about all the good stuff that is happening for our Grattan children, yay, you guys. I know it's not just you. I know it's a whole bunch of other people. Yay, you for having us get so excited about what's happening in Grattan. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Especially with the beginning of the meeting, we were talking about like and I'm not saying everything's perfect, like, I'm saying like, like yay, how, how to get us excited. And how to get us excited in September about what you guys are doing for, for our kiddos in Grattan. So thank you very much. And so I'm going to move us on. Folks, I'm going to ask that we table number six, which is discussion of class size. We are going to need to have that conversation, but I don't think it needs to be done tonight. But we can move on because I, it sounds to me that we have some more stuff that we need to get excited about here in Grattan, thanks to the work with Susan and her team and also Shannon. And so Shannon, if you can take it away.
So, yeah, so we got some great news a couple of weeks ago. The folks down at the Department of Defense Education Activity sent us that email that we're always hoping for in August, which said that they'd like to have a meeting with us to let us know that we are one of the finalists for the, for their annual competitive grant program. So we actually applied for this grant two years ago. And we did not receive it on the first round, but we were invited to resubmit it this past January. And we should know for sure in two weeks, but typically when they call us and we go over, we make the revisions, they suggest that usually looks really good. So, so we should know for sure at the end of the month, but if we are awarded, this would be another five-year grant. This would be Grattan's fifth DoDIA grant. And it's coming at a perfect time because we just finished our literacy grant, our five-year literacy grant this past year and we're about to wrap up our math grant at the end of this coming year. So this grant is a five-year grant. It's for $750,000 and it focuses on professional. There's a lot of funding for professional development. The theme is on science and pathways, so it'll enhance kind of all the work that Peter and Ted was describing about the vertical integration of these programs, these initiatives that we've started over the past five years with the International Baccalaureate Program. And a, a, a big chunk of it will go towards continuing our work with Teachers College. So over the past five years, we, the, the focus of that has been on literacy professional development with our K through eight teachers, I believe. And this will have more of an emphasis on interdisciplinary work with a focus on science. There's also some funding for professional development with the career, IB Careers Program and Project Lead the Way and some funding for supplies for classes that help have a health science focus at the high school and a few other goodies.
So the nursing program, biomed, some of those, you know, that we really want our kids prepared for. When we look at Grattan, we have just a plethora of opportunities for them, you know, to think about in their careers between, you know, Electric Boat and Pfizer and so many of the manufacturing components. So that this is really a way that kids can, can get to that career that will really promote what they love to do and what they're good at. So it's just another way. It could be a way that families could save money because, you know, we, there's all different ways to really encourage that next level of education. And this careers program is really a K-12. So even little children, when they go to the fire station or the police station or, you know, the hospital where they really get an opportunity to see, you know, what people do for careers and then into the middle school and into the high school. And some marketing too. So our families really are aware of all the opportunities in the day of the life of our students. And so that they're very much aware of that, as are our kids.
Yeah, I did want to mention that DoDIA did say that they're very happy with Grattan and that one of the things that they like that we do is that we continue to expand on and enhance our initiatives, that they work with a lot of school districts that are kind of just like starting up new initiatives that aren't really connected to each other. Every couple of years and they like that in Grattan, we start something and we kind of keep enhancing it and building on it and deepening it. So.
Just amazing.
So this is one of the three grants that Shannon has worked, actually four or five grants that Shannon has worked on this year. She's worked on quite a few and we've really received through Congressman Courtney, some careers money and the expanding our Treehouse Program for our middle school, our Perkins Grant. So I can't thank her enough. Without her being able to do this, I might have some bright ideas, but she's the engine behind fruition. So I applaud her.
And well, I did want to mention that there were a couple of people that were really involved with the development of this. So Anne Fabraknek was one of the key content contributors to the grant and Erin was too, along with our IB coordinators and our magnet theme coordinators too. So we had a really great team working on it and I do enjoy helping people kind of pull their ideas together and put it into a pretty little proposal.
It is a great proposal.
Shannon, can you once again tell the board about what, what would be the grant monetary?
So it is $750,000 over five years. And it's, and I think, if I remember correctly, it's it's pretty evenly dispersed over those five years. So whatever that
Elementary, middle and high school. And even with staffing, you know, it supports the magnet program at the elementary school for that support. And then the high school growing their nursing program and also the project Lead the Way.
Yes, so there are
in high school.
There are funds for kind of each grade level. So there are some funds for elementary work, middle school work and high school work. Probably, probably the bulk of it is going towards the high school, but then the, I think it's $36,000 per year for the Teachers College Program, which is, which will be the elementary and middle school.
It's really reading and writing across the different curriculum. So the way we read and write closely with science differs from math, differs from social studies. So I think really taking that approach that we're all reading and writing teachers, no matter what we teach. And so I think it's going to be instrumental in really moving that forward for everyone. So I'm excited about that.
So there is a reason why I asked that, that monetary, just to remind the board that there is by charter, there's a process that when we receive a competitive grant that we need to kind of go to the town council, then, then to the RTM. And so, you know, and, and my understanding is that there's a short period of time that where there's a, there's a, we have to accept it, correct? And maybe it wasn't last year because it was in person. So maybe it was 2019. Dr. Gwinier met with the then superintendent and Susan and who is now the superintendent and the manager, John Burt, to talk about the fact that sometimes we don't, we can't wait for the town to agree to accept. But by charter, we have to go through those, that processes and that he said that he would fast-track. And I am just wondering what the board thinks about Susan just sort of notifying John that it looks pretty good that we're going to get this grant so that he could begin to put it on the town council and the RTM radar so that, you know, Susan and Shannon and us can go and present it to the town council and then try to get it onto the RTM as quick as possible so that we could do that because we've been promised by John Burt and the that we're not going to lose out on something because they, their process is
And I've seen him do that with the Children First Grattan Grants that we've been part of. Where we are just really the fiduciary, but we see all this good work that's happening for our children who are, you know, birth to three and then early grades. So
So I'm just, I'm just wondering from the rest of the board, are you comfortable with me having, having her tell the manager that we've got this, got this grant that is coming so that we can kind of get it moving on? Dean, do you have a comment?
Uh, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of you approaching.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Super. Thank you. Anything else about this? Shannon, I, you're just
Thank you, Shannon.
It's just amazing.
Could you just tell us what the timeline is when you are meeting with the DOD to about the grant?
We should probably hear soon. Like, I was expecting to hear before the end of this month.
Yeah, I think the latest, the latest that they can tell us is, yeah, the last day of the month because technically the grant is supposed to start October 1st.
Oh, great. Thank you.
That sounds wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I, I have to say I have two big announcements for next, tomorrow. I've got a granddaughter who's being born in the morning. And also we're going to get the official news about our National Blue Ribbon winner tomorrow at 11 o'clock. So I will be on call and you're going to be the first to know.
Great.
Very excited. So there is a lot of good news in Grattan and we're trying to work on the news that isn't so good and really work out the finding problems and solving them because I just want our kiddos getting to school on time in the most efficient fashion safely and getting home on time. So that's the goal.
I'm going to recognize Jay.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Kim's statement. You know, whenever Shannon comes on, we, we, we think that there's some great news coming down the pike. And you, you recall when, when she volunteered to do this years ago and her first grant was what, $1 million? And it's just been an, an amazing collaboration and I just want to thank her for everything she does to, to work through these grants.
Thank you.
The big ones than the little ones, the Dalios for teachers that have caused them to travel and pursue their wonderful things. I mean, she's involved in so many aspects, I have to tell you. And really understands our district so well. So she's really part of my central office team when we're coming together. So I really do appreciate her work as a, you know, really one of the coordinators in our central office. So thank you, Shannon. As a, you know, really one of the coordinators in our central office, so thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, once again, thanks, like, like, that sounds so trite, but thanks, like, you're amazing, thank you for your work. So we've moving, we've moved, we're gonna table the next agenda item, which is the class sizes, we are gonna need to have that for budget. But budget purposes, but I promise it's gonna, it's gonna get, it's gonna get on, but now you guys can kinda look at it, because I know that we never have enough to do, so. You'll have some, you know, gentle reading to do about class sizes.
And it's not different from the past, Kim, it's kind of the same standard, so.
And so we're going on to the referral list, do we have any conversations about that?
It's essentially the same list that we had.
Right, I know.
That we saw before, right?
Yep, yep, I'm just making sure that the corrections got made and people, I'm not a good editor, so I'm always looking to make sure that people. Pick up those things, are there future agenda topics that people want us to hit?
Can I just have a quick question?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Andrea, about the referral list. I noticed there's some things on here and I know, I think we've addressed this before, but there's stuff on here from two thousand seventeen. I mean, how long do we keep things on this referral list until they're done?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is a good question to see if the electronic one has been updated and it probably needs to be updated again anyways, given what we've done. Last sixteen months, Andrea.
I, I'd like to make sure that we look at the idea that we're going to have two COW meetings. Because, you know, there, there comes a time when it gets to be so long that you, you lose what you're thinking. So I, I'd like to back and make sure that we take a look at that.
Is that from Rita's conversation, I believe, right, yeah, I, I apologize, I tried, I, I've been trying to keep the meetings to two. No more than two, today was an exception, because.
I just, I just, I just remembered that you said that they would be very, very long and I just wanted to make note of that. If, if we went back to just one-on-one, that's all.
Well, we're gonna bring it up as an agenda topic, we're not gonna have a discussion about, about it.
Okay.
So I promise it will go, it will go on, I'm actually thinking it makes sense for us to talk about it in a retreat. When we are talking about board stuff and, and how we wanna do stuff.
Very good.
And it could piggyback on the work that you and, and Liz are doing in terms of the board handbook and policies anyways, so. Think of that.
In that case, there's a time.
Well, any other future agenda topics? I make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got second. All those papers, hi.
Thank you all.
Have a good week.
Bye, guys.
Bye.